Well, welcome everybody. Let's go over the minutes. Does anyone have any edits or changes to the minutes?
Did anyone get the minutes?
Nope.
I think we did.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Good.
Oh, really? Because I looked for them and I couldn't find them.
Yeah, it has the same problem I do.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna move that we approve the minutes if there are no objections.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we're going to open a public hearing and I'd like a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
To hear. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
To hear the Eleven Gold Rock Road LLC.
Do you want to present for Eleven Gold Rock? My board is asking if anybody is here to present for them, yeah, the applicant, not to speak, yeah, we'll get there. I don't see their applicants.
I don't either.
Okay, so.
You need to admit them.
Richard, Richard is the applicant, I don't see. Any one a second call?
Yeah, we'll second call that. Okay. So then I'm gonna open new business.
We have to, I'm sorry.
Do we have, do we don't have to make a motion to second call, do we? No.
No.
Or we don't have to close it till the time being?
No. So we'll start with new business. Twenty-seven Howard Street, is somebody here to represent them? Okay, and this is an application for a certificate of appropriateness for proposed new front stairway design. Any comments? Historical.
So this is that house with the bricks?
Okay. Please identify yourself.
Captain, my name is John Lipton, here as the agent of the Republic LLC. So reconsiderations upon staircase from the drawing that was approved, which was the historic, not the stair. The owner is going to want to voluntarily take a turn away from the road. Then we've had to raise the house and the staircase is encroaching even closer to the front property line, it now lands directly on it. And lands about five feet from the road edge. The owner is very concerned about animals, about kids coming down the staircase and it's very close, it's a very narrow street. There's parking on the opposite side, so car very often come directly towards that staircase. There's also, if you're not sure, it didn't know what happened to it during a snowstorm.
That's crazy.
It was completely uncovered and actually broke the ramps with the snow pluck. Next door neighbor, he's written a letter of support of this application. And also brings up, it's a very good fact that we made that the staircase sort of appears with a view down the streetscape of these three contiguous properties that are all historic and all look very good. So.
Well, I thought we did approve.
We did, but this is.
You did.
Whereas we were revising, so, so question. Would it be helpful to see what was approved?
What was approved is.
I'm gonna pull it up right now.
Okay. I'm assuming this drawing is proposed revisionist.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And so what I'm, I'm doing fresh.
I tried to take pictures of it, but with the fencing that's around and the ground pile before the bodies wasn't possible.
Alright, so.
I didn't, I think Zach, didn't you say that to have a staircase that came down and turned was not historic?
That's right.
Correct, yeah.
So we're, yeah.
So he's back asking.
Right, exactly.
That's what he wants, here you go.
Thank you. But it's hiding under me.
Did it snow like this last?
I think, I think what the board.
It's snow last winter, there was one worry about it. I don't remember that.
Is that this not be overdesigned?
It's gonna remain a very simple, it's gonna remain a very simple staircase with one platform as you turn. But truly it is a safety issue coming directly out to road.
So it's fear.
So can I just, can I just, just help me understand, right? At the moment, the stairs just go directly out to the street?
Yes.
And so anytime a plow comes in or any other incursion, it's throwing snow or anything else onto the, onto the stairs?
They came out of the house with the Jasons, uh, had his two dogs and came out. A lot of it jumped literally such down the staircase and right out to the road. So they're just very much hoping for a safer way to access the house.
Okay.
Just to get the sort of general context straight. The house is situated on a newly bought foundation. It's not.
Yes.
Okay.
They have to raise it.
Okay, I'm just trying to guess the.
The house didn't move anywhere, so there was.
Well, it's on a new foundation.
It's on a new foundation.
Didn't it have to be raised up a little bit or not?
It was, it was, it was raised up.
Right.
Yeah.
So. So what I'm trying to get to is the staircase, I think what we looked at is clearly if the house is higher than it used to be.
Definitely is.
Then the staircase is gonna be longer than it
Was.
used to be and should be, and now we're going out onto the sidewalk. So what I'm trying to get to is, has the height of the house changed from what it appears to have been historically? I know it's been re-ord.
It, it was raised. Now, the people that raised the house
Yeah.
did it under a building permit.
Yeah.
But it was the previous owners that.
That's questionable.
It was the previous owners that went into litigation with one another for over two years and left the house.
This is that house that was in.
So the Mrs. Zimmerman will now inherit these issues.
Correct. But, but they're, in the, in the, in placing the house back on a new foundation, which is a condition that the present owner took possession of, he didn't, okay. That doesn't really matter, but choices have to be made. Now, Mr. Vermandois has a, a landing, if you will, that projects out from the front of the house by three feet, one inch.
By code, by code, at the front door, you needed three foot platform.
Yeah, you already, he already has a front.
The platform, the video platform also has to be a minimum of three foot.
Oh, so that's, that's code.
Yes.
And so, oh, this is very, very helpful. So then coming down straight from that out toward the street, you find yourself landing uncomfortably close to the curb.
Yes, sir. And we had to make the staircase a lot steeper to make it actually hit the property line. If we had kept it at the same slope gradient that it originally was before the house was lifted, it would have overran the property line and been in the village right of.
It looks uncomfortably steep in that picture. I thought, I thought that it was a trick of trick photography.
No, no side of hand there.
Okay.
So this would then go down four steps?
Did you guys see this?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's Megan's.
Come down to a landing and then turn.
And then turn.
So let me ask you this, let me just interrupt you.
Okay.
First of all, I think.
First of all, do you know how much the house was raised?
I'm sorry, sir?
Do you know how much the house was raised from its original height?
I was not, I was not on board with this project when the house was originally lifted, not without it.
This must be, is this Megan's?
I believe it was lifted a little less than two feet. But the gentleman, the builder who did it is no longer in the state, I can't ask him.
Okay, so two feet. Would be about three additional treads?
We shortened it up because New York State allows you to go nine and a quarter and a rise. So we were able to get eighteen inches out of that because we steepened everything up to the, to the nine and a quarter, taking it away from a more comfortable six and a half inch step. So we made it to the absolute maximum that the state code would allow us to do it. Now it's just a steeper climb, but we were able to get the, to get it to land on the property.
When you say made, is it already manufactured?
It was built in place and they would like to take it off of the house and put the platform in the middle and turn it, so it'll have it slower, it'll have a less steep slope to it. And you're also not spilling out directly into the road.
So let me ask you this, if the, if the grade of the landscape was raised, wouldn't it mitigate the issue? Because now, now you, you could have the same slope, but if the landscape is raised two feet and graded, then you, you wouldn't have the problem.
We're literally coming down right at the edge of the property line between the curb and where the, where the prop, front property.
You're saying it, but that was.
Have to raise the village property up in order to do that.
That, can you say something? I, the way I look at it is that historically, it's already been changed. So I do not have a problem with, with this plan now to have steps come down, have a little landing and over. It's already been changed historically and I feel that this would actually be helpful.
So it's an unusual situation because this is one of the very few houses in the village which sits on a raised basement that was built as such. So not, not just like a normal, it's a, like a full story where you climb nearly a full story to come in on the first floor of the house and there are two windows, it's brick foundation. So it's, it's a high raised basement, just to begin with. And whether it was built, rebuilt exactly within inches of what it could or should have been is really immaterial because that's what it is. And the only alternative remedy here would be to try to push the house down, which is not.
Well, no, my, my, my thing is raise the land up.
Well, but where the stairs come down, it touches the front edge of the property. There's no more property.
It's village property.
It's the village property.
That's the problem, it comes right down to the property line, so it's, it's a.
It would have to have a retaining wall and like this and then, then the road.
Whatever, I mean, you know, we keep doing this for people's convenience. We're gonna have, we're gonna have a lot of arguments to make going forward, right? And, and, and so.
Is your concern precedent?
Yes.
That's why I pointed out that this, there's only one other house that presents this condition over by the hardware store here on Believe In Town in which a house was intentionally built on a raised, very unusual for a village house. It's more of an urban, sort of a city type house to be situated up that high, which gives you full windows on the basement level, we don't want to get into that. We have a long agenda, so I, I think it's a unique condition and, and, and this, what you're building is entirely new. It's not like there was something of his, there was no historical staircase there, that, that was all roofed. So anything that gets built is new. And I think that the tight configuration there does.
This works better.
Future.
Just a.
Zach said, I think it's easy to distinguish this from future applications.
Yes, yes, I think that's the right track.
Okay.
The only other options, just to extend.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, looking at the stairs, the way it is now, it's very steep and it, it looks kind of like a coal chute or something, I mean, like a toboggan run. And it doesn't, it, it's not that good looking and I would not mind the idea of it turning, even though that's not historically accurate. But I think it would actually look better.
My mother-in-law would not be able to navigate those steps.
Right, it looks like an escalator.
Exactly. It's like stairway to heaven.
So can we?
Do we have any other comments from Megan?
I agree, I don't think the way the stairs are now is good looking. Or safe. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve these turning staircase.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna oppose it.
How did this get even higher out of the fucking ground? That's the fast one.
Okay. While we're doing the administrative work, who's here to represent sixty-one Madison Street? Is anyone here, like they're online?
Yeah, maybe it's the June, right?
It says thirteen.
Thirteen, is it thirteen or, yeah.
Yeah, thirteen.
Oh yeah, we're seeing a ten. Okay.
Not ready.
And a second call? Alright, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
John Street. Oh yeah, this is, this is like cool, you see that, no.
To bring my eye tech to you.
They'll shout at me. Maybe she'll shout it, yeah. He looks like he's very. Yeah. He's looking up here.
So can you identify yourself?
And this, every, everyone has the drawing package.
I think just gonna pull it up there.
We'll get it, we'll get it in a moment.
We'll get it in a moment.
But you can start now.
Alright.
And your name, please?
Yeah, David Griffin and my company is David Griffin Interiors and Design. I am here for thirty-seven John Street. And the plan is, the, the owner is here of the house, John is. And it's an existing two-story Victorian house on John Street which was actually restored by the owner himself, did a great job crafting the exterior. You should be excited to see, if you haven't, there's some existing condition photos there in the package. What the, what the existing house historically was is that it was a, a mix of Queen Anne detailing, sorry, Queen Anne style and massing Victorian with some stick detailing to the exterior of the house.
Can you tell us on the screen, what are we looking at, just so we can follow you?
Yeah.
The image on the screen.
But maybe you, you won't, uh.
You tell me what feature you want and I will.
That's fine, leave there. Anyway, just talking a little bit about the existing house. So the addition that's proposed, it's just a long elevation, the existing house is kind of the white area to the, to the left of the image. And where the, the doors that are like a French door and the hatching starts is where the addition starts. This view is actually from Columbia Street and the view below is from John Street. And there's a little piece of the addition actually fucking out from behind. So the plan is really, you take the historic precedent of the house and, and bring it into the expansion. They would have a roof deck above that would be half of the roof deck above. You can go to the next page, you can see then the other buildings and then, and maybe, maybe to the third page quickly, see. So. Next one? Sorry, so this is more or less the plan. The addition is a dash line halfway back in the main building at the top there. There would be a pool and a pool house and a studio in the back.
So two new, two new buildings in the back?
Yeah, two accessory buildings in the back and one addition of the first story. The second story of that addition to the main house, half of that would be a roof terrace.
And the driveway, where is the driveway located?
The driveway, it, it's kind of a parking area, gravel parking area up on the, the north, sorry, the, the
Up on the left-hand side.
corner there.
Okay, that little section right there, yep, okay.
You just park your cars and then there's a deep, and then it's kind of gravel.
Okay.
So this is all a beautiful corner lot with beautiful lighting.
Oh, I, yeah, yeah, well aware of it, yes.
Everyone loves that house.
And there's a, there's going, there's a hedge, there's a, quite a large hedge.
Yeah, so. So there's an existing garage there, it's, sorry, do you mind going back one page, right, maybe the order's a little. And the, the existing garage sits there and that, that's kind of an elevation showing where that garage is, so that, that's coming down and the addition's coming in its place and it's kind of the same, similar massing of that garage that's there.
It's just a little tall.
What's the square footage again?
Of the addition?
Exists, do you have proposed and then?
The whole deal.
It should be on the, in the.
Yeah, it's on the, on the plans there, sorry, go one more sheet. No, back, the other way, yeah.
Yeah.
Top there, so the addition is fourteen hundred thirty-six square feet. The, the lock coverage is four, four thousand two hundred thirty-five square feet.
Uh huh.
So, yeah, which allowable is twenty-five percent or five thousand max square feet. Building coverage is thirty-three thousand seven hundred ninety square feet and it's a max twenty percent, which is four thousand allowed.
In only.
And the gross floor area of the house with the addition will propose will be thirty-seven ninety-nine.
Do we know if the garage is contributing?
It is.
It is.
Uh oh.
According to the nomination.
Oh, which read. Just, I'll, yeah, maybe I'll just finish my. So I think ar-architecturally, the plan, if we go back, actually go to my drawing to the first sheet first. The second sheet. Take back one more here. Architecturally, the concept here is to give it, give this addition kind of a conservatory feel to tie into the Victorian feel. There, there would be cedar siding and ornamentation similar to the house, to the existing house. Cedar shingle roof with copper, copper gutters like the existing house. The doors and windows take cues from the front of the house, this down here with the two over two window and they're not detailed, but on the left is a porch with French, with French doors that exist historically. And then, if you mind going to, we have some door elevation details and the last page, the last page is kind of a close-up of the existing house and the beautiful mix of materials that are in it that we hope to carry through.
Do you have a photo of the garage?
Uh, go back one.
Yeah, there is, yeah, there is.
Go back one. So.
See, yeah.
The, the top left is the front of the house, it's a little white dashed line of where the addition would stick out on that side. The, the next photo, sorry, the next photo top right is looking from Columbia Street and the existing house and then the dash line is showing you where that, the proposed would land behind the pivot. And the garage is down here, the picture right below, a side view, it kind of has a barn or a front.
Right.
Uh, and then it kind of has clapboard siding.
So, so to clarify, if I look at the lower right-hand corner picture, is that the back looking at the existing garage?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
And is the intent to be able to tear down the garage or to modify it into the shape that you're currently referring?
No, that, it's in very bad condition, it's just quickly painted to kind of look nice for the distance. But you know, it's an old garage, it's kind of an old garage, but it's replaced with an aluminum garage door at some point in the eighties, I would guess, and so on. So there is nothing really to take care of in that garage, historically.
Well, I would suggest however that since the garage is identified as contributing and perhaps misidentified war since nineteen eighty-six or whatever, ninety-four, I guess the date is. So in the last thirty years, time may have taken its toll and may be an integrity issue, but, but they're, they're unknown.
I would think that we just need to make a, you need to make a site visit on it, on that garage.
You know, verify what, what is there, is, is it, what's described.
Right. And then think about, we, would, would we need to do a public?
Yes.
Yes, so we have to do a public hearing anyway. So.
For the garage.
Well, no, because, well, because of the size of the, of the, of the house and the addition and the garage.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
That's gonna be, you would like the garage to be gone, but you are gonna replace it with something new.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need.
And you mean that's only.
We need to do a, we would need to do a public hearing because of the size of it, because of the size of the property.
Not a zoning review, not a zoning board review.
Okay.
Because of the size, yes. Here for people to get feedback.
Because of the size.
Okay.
So we couldn't, what I'm saying is, is we can't at this meeting.
Right.
Okay, this, this project, so, because we have another step, so we need to, and it would, I think it would be very good for everyone for Zach to go over and check out the garage and see what he comes up with and then we'll go from there at the next and, and probably Carrie will be able to schedule a public hearing.
The July eleven.
So let me ask this question, while we're talking about Zach's scope, are you changing any of the existing historic penetrations?
No, I mean, it will connect on the back pretty smoothly and just carry, carry on.
And, and you, you intend to maintain the existing windows?
Of the existing house?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you show the photo that we saw in the folder of the, you know, it was a, I guess a picture, it's not a, the real deal, you know, of the.
Elevation.
Yep. Well, not so much the elevation, the, the, the connecting, those, yeah, that you want to build. There was a photo in the folder. And I thought that that was pretty, I was pretty impressed. Oh, it's, no, it was, it was the whole thing, it's.
The rendering?
Yeah, rendering, that's the word, thank you. That we have it so that we can see it on the.
Render everything.
It's not a meal, but I saw the whole face, don't look. In the folder. Like, dude.
But it is a year going is where I have to go as well, which is, what does that connection look like, even if you look at that?
Yeah, but it's a beautiful rendition of it, beautiful, it's amazing looking when you see it.
Are you familiar with the rendering she's referring to? No?
Okay.
And there's a photograph that you're.
No, no, it was in color.
So cool.
So can we talk a little bit about the addition between the main house and the garage that is coming down?
Maybe you put her back up on the screen.
Didn't anyone else see?
With the greenhouse, maybe of sorts.
When they look.
Well, I mean, conceptually, I mean, it has a conservatory feel, you know, where it's broken.
It's, there's red, it's beautiful.
Lighted space.
It's not this?
But in this case, it's a.
No, it's the whole deal, that's like a close-up of it.
Lighted space that were third five.
Yeah, I understood, I mean, it's all what we've got.
Right.
That's a new part. I didn't see it in rendering.
Maybe for you, maybe.
I mean, I, I don't think I would have been all. I mean, you can see this, but I'm telling you it was in color, but maybe I'm missing those.
Are you sure it's?
There, that's the one, yeah, there, there we go.
Or the next.
Yeah.
But that's funny, oh, great.
Yeah, okay, so. It's like a point, I mean, the kitchen is on the back of the existing house and it's a big space, it's the full width of the house. And then there's a, a porch below that jutting house that is a screened-in porch. So the, the wall, the south wall of that kitchen is literally continuing and there, there, and it changes kind of where the porch and the house meet. It changes into the, 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 the section that I'm calling the conservatory addition with the, the French doors and stuff.
This is the kitchen, the lantern, so you're connected.
If I, if I, if I, I'm, eh, eh, made it easy to explain it in a way that eh, what we worked on was to take the, the shape as a garage, kind of expand it, basically it would fit bedrooms in that, in that part eh, and then connect that garage to the existing house with this that they calls conservatory.
Yeah.
And, and the whole, old, hundred-and-fifty-year-old house will stay intact and we know everything will stay as it is. And then we kind of will do this as a expansion that we're setting in, you know.
I definitely, it could have been, it definitely could have been that I, I'm basing it. I'm basing it on that on this and then the, you know, the close up picture that
So
Yeah.
Let's see that.
But I I think if it would be
Oh, that's
it would be benefit, well, beneficial for all of us if you could do a
That where is that, that's some place. Rendering.
A rendering, thank you, of of the
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
This is, I mean, maybe I just thought, could you could you show the picture of the
Yeah. Cause how wide is it, it's Cause part of what I'm trying to figure out is is I'm looking at the back of this, coming from the kitchen to the mandrel, this this connection you should have in the back, right?
Here, you're gonna see Oh, this is Put it up on the screen.
I don't know. On the on the side view actually looks longer than I had initially anticipated, but when I looked at it on this uh on the blueprint it's it's not that wide in this space, we're just trying to get a sense of
Right, yeah. Yeah.
It's not.
Well, if if I could I approach and point it
If I Yes, yes, I would. Yeah.
On this one, but I
Yeah.
Well, this this is the screened in.
Right, right.
This
The the screen that it is.
And then here's a little piece of wall here.
Right here, yeah.
That's that wall.
Yeah.
And then
So this this bit here would have would sound like that.
And then the other side, this by taking the foot
On the entire roof.
Right, but you're keeping this as is, so this is the addition on this side and this lot is four things will be on this side.
That's why
Yeah, yeah.
The railing, right, that would be, and this this is a porch and that would be the roof, yeah.
Really, yeah. Right, but not as big as this is, yeah.
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 Could you please put up the view that shows the conservatory? That one, yeah, I have a question which is the conservatory part, suddenly the windows and everything look very dark in comparison to the rest of the house, is that just
Well, that
an illusion?
The windows are shaded here.
It's just a door.
It's just that, yeah, I mean
It's black.
There's no shade on that existing house and then there's shading on the windows.
Right. Alright, so but the windows in the conservatory, um they match? Uh I see that they match the windows in the addition to the right.
Yes.
But do they match anything on the old house to the left?
No.
No, they take hints, they don't match exactly.
No.
But they're narrow and they each have transom lights.
Yes.
They actually do match if I make, they match on the the porch that's on the John Street side. On the left side of the house, you don't see it if you pass by because the hedge is so high.
Right.
But there is, there's like French doors.
Yeah. That's where I mentioned on the left corner there.
Right, like I don't know if you, this this here.
Right, if you put that
There's French doors.
Oh, there you go, there you go. On on to the left of the doorway.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So um
Gonna do a site visit and scheduled for a public hearing, right?
Yeah. Yep.
Absolutely, and my recommendation is bring back as much graphic visual information as you can
We got it.
for us in the public to to be more specific. Okay, um does anyone else have any questions or comments?
They asked that.
Yeah.
You're gonna go ahead.
We need to host people.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that, they're just talking, I don't want to close this until they come to consensus.
Yeah, I mean, I do have a question just at the end.
Mm-hmm.
He's okay.
Um right now, if do you, it it's more a question for you, um if the studio, maybe we go to the site for kind of this search.
Just just out of curiosity, when you mention the word studio, are we talking about studio apartment or studio in terms of
Our
study and artwork, okay.
I'm a photographer. I'm a photographer, so that's kind of, you know, that would be part of, and then that's also one of the reasons for all the windows in that
Right.
Okay.
in that conservatory, uh to be able to use that as a daylight.
Okay.
For my personal uh
Thank you.
I mean, the question, we were just having trouble locating that little building in the back, um it, do you
It's the back of the
Would you see any problem if that studio came closer to John Street?
This one, if that could move this way.
Oh. Oh. Well, it it depend, it's it's all about the measurements, right?
Right, so it's about your your side yard setback, your rear yard setback, et cetera.
Right.
Uh Yeah, you're
Yeah, it's no
Your building
Comply with that, you know
Yeah, yes, your build, the
Have any visual
The building inspector will
We might need variance for an accessory structure.
Yeah.
Yep, we'll figure it out, right?
Yeah. Cause the size is considered the front yard, yeah.
Yeah.
But but that's out of our purview, really.
Buildings. Yeah, we just asked that.
Okay, that's really zoning uh and the building inspector, but but um I think uh Ms. Vale raised a good point about you putting up another accessory structure, you might need uh a variance for that, no?
I said you might need a variance for uh putting the accessory structure in a front yard if you move it closer to John Street.
Okay.
Or closer to that Columbia Street.
Yeah.
Either way, right, yeah.
We need to check the building department, building inspection, that's all.
Sure.
That's it, okay.
So can I ask your feeling in general of the whole project? I mean, what's your?
We can each go, Megan, what do you think?
Um I mean, I think it's a pretty modest addition, however it's I mean, I wanna hear what the national register listing says because it's such a like important structure, like maybe it shouldn't be touched at all. Is what I'm thinking.
You mean the garage?
The house.
The Oh, okay.
Like, how can you approve upon it? You're so lucky, you have a beautiful house.
My my problem with that is that I have a big family as well. And and this this addition, I mean, as it is now, we have one bathroom. We have three bedrooms, one bathroom, which is a little too too few, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a growing family in Sweden, a son with a granddaughter and a wife, et cetera. So we cannot see this as something, and we live out here full time. Uh we see it, uh hopefully we can see it in the future, as a somewhere for everybody to meet. Uh and we have a daughter uh getting married and expecting et cetera as well, so yeah, that's that's the reason we want to expand.
The accessory structure is going to be livable?
No, I mean, that's that's not the
Just a studio and a pool house?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the the space will be enough in the main house as if we if we can do this. And I mean, we wanna stay, if if we if we um I I completely hear what you're saying, yeah, on the other hand, I you know, I I uh and that's not my, that's not an argument, but walking the village, you see a lot of things going on and stuff coming up and and
Yeah, where does it end?
Yeah.
Well, that to Megan's point, you know, we don't wanna unleash the kraken, you know what I mean, so so um
No.
we're we're trying to be relatively conservative, Judith, what are your thoughts?
Um I I'm a I think it looks nice. Um I'm concerned about the garage because if it is a nice old Sag Harbor garage, I wouldn't want it to be disturbed, but we don't know. It could be just horrible.
I can move the garage, I can move, I can use the garage as the studio structure instead.
Hmm, that might be
If 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 that would be, if it
Alright, well, wait, see what he says.
So But I I I mean, let's see, come and take a look at it, and I'll see what you
Yeah, wait, see what he says.
But maybe that could be something.
Okay.
I I think it's, and I I don't, I I I very much like it and I I felt I loved how, of course, it would, let's face it, it would have to have been an an a a very tall uh adding onto the house for it to uh not be uh you know, for it to be too big. And now I just love this, the way it's tucked behind there and behind the main part, you can see it from the roots, it's
Right, it's modest.
It's also we have those gigantic oak trees, so that
Mm-hmm, you have the trees, you have the hedge, you have the hedge.
The size of those trees, the house comes, you know, in scale, I think that helps.
It's
I was, I thought, I was pleasantly surprised.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm really, I'm really happy to hear you're not making any changes to the main house
True.
because I think that's uh sort of the connection from the from the back uh
Yeah.
Oh, it's
Yeah, yeah.
That actually makes me really happy, it's like I'm, the garage, like I I hope to hear um his review, but I do think the
Yeah. Sure. Will you come along?
If I could get to
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I wanna come along.
Yeah, yeah.
So to, but the addition connecting the two, I thought it was actually um very sensitive.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think everything, everything you've done to the main house has just been wonderful, just let me say.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I I remember not, I don't know how many, how long ago it was, when you wanted you wanted to put the um windows up on the roof, right, you have the skylights, and that that didn't work out, but
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly, yeah. And remember you said, can't you find that somewhere else, and that's this is this is
There you go, so uh we'll look forward to what happens next.
Alright. Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, we'll we'll see you next month.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to table thirty seven John Street, second.
All in favor?
Bye. Thank you.
We solve.
Me.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, you have them, people will second it all up like we were, oh.
Okay, who's here to represent one thirty two Germaine Avenue?
Hi, I'm K V B, I'm the owner of this, it's Olavega. That's in my contract.
Okay.
Hello. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is uh
Paula Vega.
I was K V B, you mean me and Paula Vega.
Um well, this is for the dictation of the garage, the existing garage. Compared with uh studio, art studio.
Mm-hmm.
Uh yeah, the problem is that we we already started some of the beginning from the outside. Obviously uh we need to get permission for that, because they call this it's a historic uh structure. That's why we're here. Try to see if it's a
So it it was um was it was the original structure that was there? The garage, was it, was it taken down?
Uh it's the The original structure is there. No, it wasn't.
So the work that you've done so far, I know is you put a new roof on it, correct?
We just modified. A new roof and new siding.
On the outside, you you haven't touched the interior walls or
On the outside. Uh well, it didn't have like nothing inside, it was just the framing, but not, we haven't modified the frame, but it's not modified.
Change them? Well
What um what about the outside walls?
But you changed the siding, I'm sorry, is that what you said?
Yeah, the siding and the roof, yeah.
What was the siding before you took it?
Uh it was uh cedar shingles.
And what is in that?
And now it's uh cedar, it's board button siding.
Board, it's totally
Wood, it's wood, wood, and then the the roof was asphalt. And now it's uh metal.
Uh Zach, you want to
Yeah, it is.
So that's how it is listed as contributing.
Right.
We we visited this house, this is the house with the with the steps uh that in the back. Remember, the, what was it, they
I was working, I was working historical concepts and I was gonna do a much larger thing.
Mm-hmm.
And it turned out that how this happened was that, which I probably don't normally know, it's a thing, but performed a move forward, but um I bought the house not realizing it was on such a busy street and I just felt like doing a larger renovation like that was coming out to a very high number and I didn't think the property could hold that value. And um so my daughter is also an artist. I said, can I just go put some glue stone in the back and, but it was the structure itself, it was on sand, it was literally like caving in and it was not stable structure. Um and we were hoping just to get up and going so we could have a light bright space to work.
No, I know, and and you, I mean, the mistake that was made was that you didn't come back to it.
I didn't come back.
Because, you know, we we came and saw the saw the building and talked about things and
I And we were initially, you're up the right, initially we were on the renovation, we wanted to raise it a foot. And you had basically said, go to city scene, they will be cool with uh the permitting and then just to get some inherited things of non-closed up building permits took dedicated eight months of hair pulling.
Oh, it's frustrating, I I understand that, but
Uh you know And so
Here we are now.
No, I know, here we are now, this is where we are.
Yeah, so where are where are we at?
I I don't know.
I'd like to read, yeah, really
My question, where are we at?
So what's
What are you
Do we do a site visit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there anything left of the original garage?
We don't know.
Okay.
So we go and see it.
Is it safe?
What you do with it?
Well, it's well, yeah, but like I said, we raised the walls.
Do we have any pictures, photos?
Uh yeah, there should be some pictures, so I is in right now.
Yeah.
Photos in the app.
Yeah, but how about what it used to look like?
The windows have all been done, you know, all been changed, there it is.
There's One picture where there's like mossy shingles, you left like you see, that's still there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, cause that's the neighbors side, we have a touch that's because it's a, it's like right at the property line, so not
So that's the side along the fence?
Or along the fence, yeah, yeah.
No.
That's the bar, yeah, that's the bar.
That seems to be the only part that's remains.
I mean, we went
Right, it's it's like a brand new building.
Yeah.
I went and saw, I mean, I remember us all going inside it and everything and you know, I remember going inside it.
The garage?
Yeah.
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 Inside it was just a
It's a long time ago, so the building needs to be a bakery.
Yeah, that's Justin, it was about two years ago.
At least, at least.
Yeah.
That's a building that used to be the bakery.
That's the profile of the existing
And the funny front door.
No.
You have
No, it's next to that.
Siding.
Okay.
The profile
Next to that.
And that was, it was like falling down.
isn't all that historically looking uh you know, I don't know, until we have a look at what the actual structure is, which as you said, is still there.
Right.
The internal studs and plates
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say, but yeah.
All that, uh it 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 may not be as it seems in the form. I mean, I'm just saying, just the form of the building doesn't feel like an early nineteen thirty, twentieth century built. So I think we should just take a quick look at it. And and then it becomes an aesthetic decision, not a structural thing, it's just aesthetic, cause you have a metal roof.
Right. I The other thing, Zach, that I I'd like you to do is to go and and find the original. Uh and take a look at that in the folder, what what we said, what we decided, the whole thing.
Oh, we'll find the original application, yes.
Yeah, and then I think that will help you.
Well, I can submit some of the original pictures of the
Well, that'd be good, yeah, should we take a look at that?
I would be glad that, do you see that?
Yeah, well, I I have them here, I'm not sure if I can submit.
Could we see them?
See, this is the back with the stairway and and we were gonna, you were gonna do like an up and a down or something.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so
Up and a down and, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you, it's very helpful.
Thank you.
It's existing.
This doesn't look like an old, like a soup.
And there's, there was a landscape in a fashion too, we would put some hedging in the back, the neighbors have hedging all on the backyard. And so my neighbors in the front also have hedging, clear yards, we love putting things and hedging, it's very loud.
I, I think you She was, I remember the first, what you said, but
Yeah.
Very public with lots of cars nearby.
The profile of it is not
It's not
And so I'd love to just continue almost the same thing that the neighbors are doing, just continue
It's just
I think it's probably just
So it's all contiguous
That tree right there, though.
I just wish she
Forget that one, no, then there.
Of course, I get it.
You know
Twenty first century.
But
I forgot, I remember.
The idea would be just to have a green, just to have it quiet or there and more private. Um and then have a little gate, just do two small dogs and they run out.
Their hedge can be as high as they want, right? They can't, it says no four foot thing on a hedge.
It's supposed
You guys wanna do a site visit, see?
Yep.
Yeah, it's supposed to be
Okay.
All right, it was all she wants to have a hedge like that in front of her, that was once before this, again, it's
So, let's make motion to table and we'll set
Oh.
Okay, before we make that motion, I
On Or have mercy, wait, wait, look at this.
When you talk about the hedge and the hedge height, Judith is pointing out to me uh maybe we should also ask you to bring some landscaping plans to
I think they are there, the part of the
Okay.
The station.
Before an application.
I would love to show those to you because that's so important, I just want it super green.
Yes.
Maybe um should be
Let's see if we can find it here. I I I imagine you showed us, if you go down one more thing, that's the, oh, nope, no, up, one more, this is the
Hobbies.
That's the neighbor, the front of the neighbor.
Yeah, and yes, yes, but it's the gate, it's the gate, right, that's the gate you'd like, yeah.
It's just the Yeah, that's And I'd like
Yeah, we would like to have the same, the same stuff, kind of
Yes. I'll stick that out, yep.
And and so what I'm, just so to be clear, the things that I would love to let's take us like that, I would love, because it's very icy in the winter.
Absolutely.
Gable, which we have the uh a crescent image from another house in Sag Harbor, with a little ledge, um which is actually, just like a tiny bigger land, it's quite small. And um just extend a little bit, put a raptor, I have a railing going down, so it's quite icy in the winter. And I wonder who uh come off of the mountain and go through the door, so I just I don't know, I just like to have that covered. So is that, and then if you look, if you pull up a little bit so you can see, this is where the hedges would be, we have a proper um
Yeah, the hedges.
Yeah.
We have a proper, so you know, so this is, there's hedging on the neighbors on all sides, like they have hedging. They have tall hedging and they have tall hedging, so I'm the only one has more like a thin look right now. So I'm hoping to make that all So I'm hoping to make that all green, just a very green space. And there's gonna be hydrangeas and, um, so it's that, and in the front, you look to the front for one second.
She's gonna have green there, too. She's gonna have green on the front too.
Um, let's see, actually, yeah, this is not, this is Paul's drawing, we also, would you submit?
I did submit it, yeah, it should be there.
Let's see, uh, the actual landscape designers, um.
So with hedges.
See, right now it's all fencing, but that would be, the idea of that would be all hedging, so it'd be very green.
Can you go to the, the picture of the front of the house? The way it is now?
Sure.
And, and what's your green, what's your choice for the green hedge in the back?
Uh, I think it's bay leaf, like, uh, like the neighbors, I would just continue the same hedge as the neighbors on the left. So that it's just contiguous feeling.
Is the, um, when you do, you know, submit next, uh, I, I can't remember when we looked at the plans, we need something bigger than this. In the, in the pack, I, I think. What do you think, Phil asleep? Yeah, I do, okay, I just wanna make sure.
Well, I think a couple of things, number one, the, the front, I, I believe is supposed to be four feet maximum with your hedge.
Right.
Now, your, your, your neighbors might have preceded that, exceeded that, but we certainly don't wanna sit here and approve something that's, that's not compliant with the code. So, so, um, and you have such a wonderful house to hide it from the view of everybody. I think this isn't a fortunate thing.
Well, it is a very, you know, Germaine is probably the busiest street in South Harbor and its cars are just.
Actually, you know what, it's a fence, it's not, it's a fence.
And trucks.
Zooming by there.
Your hedges and stuff can be as high as you want.
I don't think that's right.
And across the street, they have a big hedge too, like that's, it's kind of normal, my wife is.
See, is this, this is what it looks like now, right, we don't, you don't have any hedges on that, can you come up just a little bit, care?
I don't, that, what I'm looking to do is just to. To do the hedge.
With that?
You're allowed to do for a hedge, it says after.
Yeah, you can have as high as you want for the hedge, can't you?
I don't know, it says three feet.
Okay.
It says after, well, let me read it, I'm sorry. After the effective date of the section, the placement of all planting, shrubs, hedges and trees. By the owners of private mill properties in the street, they have to be set back a minimum of three feet.
Yeah.
Let's see how high.
Honestly, I, I, hedges can be whatever, it's a fence that has to be three feet.
The fence has to be.
Or four, four feet, four feet and, but the three feet is the, is the distance back, set back.
Four, four feet. Set back.
Well, is there a.
Would that, would that, would it, it would be at the same, um, it would be at the same, whatever you call it, um. Just like the neighbors, you know, it'd just all be at the same level, crazy like.
Right. I got you.
But they're not three feet back.
No, but you, you'd have to.
But what's the date of this, what is the date of this, uh, coordinates, Liz, that you're reading?
Well, this, we don't have a, a, a high restriction on the hedges in this direction, that's for sure.
We don't, no. Nope.
So I'll have to look at.
I wish you did, there isn't.
But we do that by the next meeting, since you're a journey unit.
Okay.
There isn't.
Yeah.
So we're doing a site visit.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Motion to table.
I can ask you one more quick question.
Okay.
Because there's also, I hope to do an above-ground, small hot tub. And it would need a concrete pad, uh, to be stable, it doesn't have to have a concrete pad, but it's a removable hot tub that's above ground. And that is something that, is that something that requires a site visit as well?
Well, I don't. Requires a plan, a survey and showing it on the survey and talking to the building inspector to see if you need lot coverage and anything else.
And setbacks, setbacks and everything.
Yeah, it will be, I think it would be, it would be inside, I think, of the, the plans.
Got to put on a survey and show.
Right, right, okay, yeah, I think usually have it in, in there, but, uh, but we can definitely have it or.
Yeah, then I have.
But we need to.
And then I should, one of, I'm sorry to take up the time, like, there's, uh, one question that, because I think, uh, because I have a sump pump and I don't want it to to interfere with the sump pump and I don't wanna take up the whole yard, obviously, um, is that the pool on the other side of the fence actually got a variance in terms of how far it was, and so my desire is to put this hot tub, kinda tuck it in close to one of the fences. O- on the other side of the fence is the other pool that they got a variance for.
So you might need a variance of some.
Uh, so.
So, yes, exactly.
Yeah, so.
So you might need to go to the Z B A, so again, put it, put it where you wind on your survey and then you gotta meet with the builder.
Yeah, meet with the builder, the builder is running.
And they'll give us a variance.
Yep, the builder inspector, he'll talk to you.
They'll give you the variance, tell you if you need a variance.
And then we ask you guys, now, you ask a different board, but.
You're gonna come to us when you're all ready.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go through this now, okay?
Can we write this down?
There's, there is, we, this, uh, organization, this, this board is, is based on the aesthetic exterior of your property, right? The purview for zoning, which is distances and uses and the number of buildings, is a different committee. So you have to, we don't have anything, you can talk to us and we can say it's beautiful, but if it violates zoning and you don't have a variance, the building inspector is not gonna give you a C of R. So, so you, the best order is to finalize your plans with everything you want and then take it to the zoning board and see if they will approve it. You come to us, we'll, we'll review it aesthetically and historically and, and, uh, then make our comments. Okay?
I think, I think there was in terms of the aesthetics of the, you don't mind too. Because obviously, it's, it's not as high, you know, the, the, the hot tub is not high, so you won't see it from the outside, I guess that's, that was the question that is.
Anything you do on your property has to come in front of the architectural view board. It has to meet setbacks and zoning, to come in front of, you need zoning relief and you go to the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right. Right.
So your best bet is, is to put it on a survey, come in with the building inspector and then he'll tell you what you need to do, yeah.
Right.
Yes, that's your first.
And then. I want to feel, feel, feel. Grab your board too.
Yep, you go to the building.
So we're going to do a site visit?
Yes.
Go through with you.
Building garage.
Yes.
For the garage.
Mm-hmm.
You guys get what you guys, your wishlist and everything else, put it on a survey and come meet with the building inspector.
So I'm gonna make a statement, it's independent, it's just my statement, but my observation is this bill, this village is changing, not only because of size of buildings, because how people are separating themselves from their neighbors. High fences, high, high shrubs, uh, green giants denies people natural interaction. And, and it's, it's like the building is becoming, uh, a horizontal condominium where no one knows their neighbors or wants to get familiar with their neighbors, or everybody's positioning their properties to rent them out. And that's going to lead to a, a deterioration of the society and the feel and the aesthetic that Megan grew up with, I grew up with, and a lot of people sitting here grew up with. When it was high, you saw your neighbor, how you doing? And, uh, there were lots of open sightlines, being closed off, this is becoming a closet. That's the end of my comments.
Okay.
Motion to table one three two Germaine Avenue.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, who's here for seventy-eight, those side drives?
Somebody's.
Good evening, my name is Biolanda Franciscia, I'm an architect on this project. Um, the property is located at the side apartment point division. Um, the property lot is nine thousand three hundred seventy five square feet. And this house, the square footage of the house is a thousand two hundred nine square feet, it's a very small house. Um, the first floor is eight hundred fifty-nine square feet and the loft area is three hundred fifty square feet. And that's what the application is about, the loft area. Right now, the owners are using it as the master bedroom, but they can only really just stand in the middle of the room. There's really, uh, no space to work with. So we're not looking to change the footprint of the house or increase the square footage, what they're trying to do is just add a dormer to the backside because the loft area is on the backside of the house, so this, these dormers are gonna impact the back of the house. So, um.
Yeah, it's.
So this is a shed dormer sort of thing?
Yes, the shed dormers, yeah, so if you go to the site plan, it's sheet T zero zero one. The shaded area is the back portion where the loft is. So we're not changing the square footage, what we're trying to do is just raise the plate height in the back portion so that they can make use of the space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if you go to sheet A three hundred.
What age?
A three hundred.
You mean you're not changing the footprint, but you are increasing the square footage of the house?
We're not increasing the square footage, there's a loft that's three hundred and fifty square feet, and when I say three hundred and fifty square feet, it's really just the.
Floor space.
The floor space, you can't really use the three hundred, you can't stand on the sides, it's on the center, so, yeah, so that's what I'm referring to. So the bottom is what's existing. It's a charming little house, it's got some interesting facial details and it's almost something that you would find in the Swiss Alps, I think, but.
Right, that's nice, I like it.
So, the dormers are on the backside of the house, so I brought this in just to show you the massing, it's not the, the materials. But do you see how the front, the dormer is actually shifted to the back portion of this?
Is that, that's not the same house, is it?
I know.
Okay.
I just brought this in to show you the concept, so this dormer is actually shifted to the back, so
Right.
there's quite a big difference between the front and where the dormer is gonna be on the back.
Right, the dormers are back.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, no, very backside, not even along the side, but just in the back.
Right.
The back, you know.
Mm-hmm. But you can see it on the, uh, from the front, sure, right.
Yes, you can see them, but.
Yes, you look up, right, I mean, there it is.
Well, so, uh, if you go to the next page, A three, three hundred and one, as you can see, the dormers are, you see the three skylights and then the dormers on the back portion, the first, uh, um, detail number one. The top left.
You need to get the laser pointed.
Do you want me to point that out?
If you don't want.
So.
So we're looking at the upper left.
So, where the, you see the three skylights?
Uh huh.
That's the existing house and then the dormer, that's the back portion of the house.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I didn't understand that, so it's the back half of the side?
A thousand two hundred nine square feet.
Right.
I see, I see.
It's a very small house.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, they're just trying to maximize the loft area.
Yes.
And, and, what about, what, what is about the, that, that original house was built, you know?
On the survey, it said, it was filed in nine, in nineteen, uh, I found, one two fifty.
Nineteen fifty, yeah, this is like a good day, really, it does not look that way, but then it's been renovated, I think, you're, you know.
The finishers are matching, they're.
Right, outside.
We don't have any historic houses in our district.
Yes, yeah, okay.
The dormer roof will have a metal standing seam that will be correct and all the other finishes are just matching exactly as they're.
So, so, um, I don't have any, uh, issue with what you're doing. I think it makes a lot of sense, particularly being tall, I'm sensitive to this, this issue. My, my question is, when we start talking about metals, standing seam roofs, it can, tell me what the finishes are, because it could affect the neighbor in terms of sun glare and that sort of thing. Sun glare.
Did you say it's painted?
It's.
Yeah.
The sun standing seam, is it just, what, what color is it?
It's gray, like gray.
Okay.
There are a few houses in the area that have a, a metal roof, standing seam, quite a number of houses in that area seem to have them.
The question is not whether they're permitted, question is how they will, might impact the neighbor, is that because it's in the back of the house that's probably close to another neighbor's bedroom, will the sunshine come in and bother them?
The houses on either side are quite tall and massive, especially on this side, so they're, oh, they're actually overwhelming this little house, I don't know if you've been to the property.
Uh huh.
They're just massive compared to this thing, so is it?
What's the landscape like, do we have that at all in the?
There are some pictures in the package. I think you've brought them up before, I, I do have, they are part of the package, but.
Okay. Oh, yeah, it, it's, there's a lot of trees.
Oh, growth.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, I think, there's enough shade that they're not gonna be shining.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah. I mean, look at the size.
Anyone have any other comments or observations?
And the dormers, I'm sorry, one more question, I apologize, the dormers are on both sides of the house or just one side?
Yeah, the left, yeah, where the left is.
Yeah, so it's both sides, yes, okay.
Okay, anybody else, Judith?
I think it, it makes sense and I think it'd be practical and nice.
I agree, I agree.
I think we're all in agreement, uh, so I'll take a vote to, uh, I'll make a motion to approve this.
All second.
You have a second, choose a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. So who's, uh, here for three ninety-six Division Street?
That would be me. Hello?
Yes.
We hear you.
We hear you, we'll get you on, on board in a second, we're just.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I think I can excuse myself, there's nothing coming up, don't hold this to the agenda.
Terrence, are you going to share your screen?
Uh, no, I was gonna use yours, uh, don't.
That's fine.
Okay, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you ready?
Yes.
About one moment.
Okay.
Please, you are what, while she's getting ready.
Sure, I'm Terrence McKean, uh, representing my clients, the Dow learns at three ninety-six Division Street. Um, if you wouldn't mind going to page, uh, A seven, maybe we could just go over the existing a little bit real quick to see what the actual problems were, so our clients would like to add, have pretty much a significant addition onto the house. And if you actually look at the first floor, um, the front entryway is kind of, it, it's risen quite high and, um, there's not much of a landing at arrival. When you arrive into the entryway, it's very, uh, very small type area, very tight. Um, they basically have, uh, two bedrooms off the left, the one is they use as an office. Uh, one they use as ba, uh, you know, the bathroom, the bedroom is, they actually use that bedroom as their master, because they're an older couple. And they actually wanted, um, a, a, a grand, you know, uh, master along with, um, two more bedrooms down there. And then there's a great room, an existing kitchen, and, um, one of the real problems to this, um, design is they'd like to keep the existing without just knocking the house down in one shot. So it was very difficult to get, um, like light and ventilation in it. So I really only had one area to really kind of push out and that was kind of to the south side, which is where the bedrooms are. And I kind of gutted that office, bedroom, bedroom, um, bathroom area. So if you actually wouldn't mind going to the next page, A eight, you could kind of see what the actual existing conditions look like, and then maybe we could go to the photos at A nine. And you could see the actual kind of style, the, uh, the landscaping is just, uh, pretty awful and, uh, the existing house is, um, I, I guess it's kind of a spinoff of the salt box or something, I don't know, these, I come across these quite often and almost everyone's trying to do an addition that's, you know, kind of sensitive to the, the, the house itself but also, um, you know, let that actual light and ventilation in, um, and, uh, create more space for their families, because just no one lives in a house this size really anymore with growing families. So, uh, if you wouldn't mind actually going to the floor plan, which is sheet A three. Thank you so much, so now you could see that we actually opened up that front entryway with a. Thank you so much, so now you could see that we actually opened up that front entryway with a nice covered porch. I, where, where you actually enter now is where the, that office was, so to speak, so you're entering into that space. Straight ahead, uh, you kind of, we kind of put, um, a mudroom, uh, powder room. It, it was really tough to get natural light into these spaces. And we actually created a, a, um, basically a wing off of the front entryway of bedrooms for privacy. So we cre- created two, three bedrooms all down the south side to get, you know, that good natural light in there. Um, then if you come back into the great room, we, uh, kind of blew out the kitchen, but the kitchen. Um, you know, really doesn't have a dining room, there was really nowhere to eat anymore, uh, they have a small table in the great room. That doesn't really work well for them, so, uh, what we did was we bumped out, um, a dining room off of the kitchen. And, uh, we kind of did a little reverse gable off of that. Um, and then they created kind of an outdoor area, deck area, off the back and off the side. Um, if you go up to the, the second floor on A four.
I'll be with you in a second.
Yep. So I am sorry, so off the, uh, obviously the covered area in the first floor, we did create like a little vestibule to get to a, um, to get to the garage. So, um, they're actually from Texas, so the, uh, one of their big. Programs was to have a nice office, he needs to work, but he has a big family, they have young kids. Um, well, they have grown kids that have grandkids, so. So they, he needed a spot to go up and kind of do his thing, work and just be not bothered. So that was kind of that office area we created above the, um, the garage. And, um, the, the actual upstairs, uh, in the actual, over the existing home. We bumped out that, the wall slightly, um, just to really let. Actually, natural light and ventilation in. Because I was trying to, um, you know, make the architecture, um, aesthetically pleasing. So if you would go to. A five, which is the next one, you could kind of see what I did, I actually took. The existing roof line. And I created that new center foyer area and kind of mirrored it onto the other side. And that's what made up that south wing. Um, anything I kind of did on that south side, if I didn't kind of create this, this mirror over thing. Would just, just block the windows anyway, so I had no, really no choice on the second floor, but to kind of. Push it out in that direction and kind of, uh, I kind of dug out. Windows on that side and created, uh, larger windows, larger egress, uh, windows on the front and the rear. Um, as far as the garage goes, there was, there's not enough room to actually kind of pivot and turn around on the side. Or on either side, I generally, uh, try to stay away from putting the, uh, garage doors on the front. But, um, the way this, the existing house is situated without me actually physically. You know, knocking the building down or, or. I don't know, I was at, I, I didn't have much of any choice to get around so that the car could go in from the side, so. So as a result, we kind of have the garage doors on the front. But if you look at the front, it kind of created more of like this, uh, craftsman farmy type home. Now, we do have some metal roofs, but, uh, I heard on the last comment, uh. It's actually kind of like a matte dove gray finish on the metal roof, so it's not gonna be reflective, really. But the lot across from them, they own, it's just woods. And the other lot to the north side is, they, they actually donated it to the town already, so it's, um. I, I think it's like a, uh, a water, something, something they, uh, Suffolk, um, I think, uh, Sag Harbor uses it for. It's like a town facility over there.
Water, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So on the left, on the left-hand elevation, you could kind of see where I dug those windows out and just kind of. You know, kind of carried the design through. And then. If you would go to A six. This is, the top is the rear elevation, they, um, basically they have this double gable and I carried this farm. You know, kind of themed, themed through, they are using, uh, shingles though. The shingles are gonna be, uh, like pre-finished Malback cedar shingles, they're a light gray. And, uh, you could see that on the front, and then the actual, uh, roofing is gonna be an asphalt oyster gray architectural shingle. So you could kind of see the great room now, uh, the actual master has a great view of the, the rear where the pool is gonna be. The bathrooms, the actual kitchen has a nice view off the back to the pool, new pool area, the dining room. So on and so forth, so I, I was basically trying to create views and, um, get that good natural light into the home. As far as the square footages go, um, the existing first floor was one thousand one hundred and sixty-three. And we added one thousand sixty-eight square feet. So the total now is two thousand two hundred and thirty-one square feet. The existing second floor was five twenty-four and we added nine hundred and eighteen. And that wa-, that total would be one thousand four hundred and forty-two, so the actual total now would be three thousand six hundred and seventy-three.
You're gonna need a public.
Yep.
Oh, why?
Cause it's over three. I think it's three.
And isn't it more than double the original structure? As well?
Just, uh. Yeah, yes.
So.
Not at work, it's not, it, um, I think. Meg, I don't wanna say it's dirt division.
That's.
No, it's, it's right before dirt division.
Right before.
Yeah, it's like that long driveway kind of that goes off.
Yeah, it's literally like the last house in, in Sag Harbor Village.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm sorry, uh, what, what were you saying, that it's over thirty-five hundred, so we need to have a public hearing?
It's over three thousand square feet, so you're going to need a public hearing, um, the next available public hearing that you could be on is July eleventh.
July eleventh? Okay.
So, so before we finish this, second floor, you're, you're, uh, you have a balcony, is, am I reading that right? Is that a balcony on the second floor?
No, there's not, it's actually just, um.
That's asphalt roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cut in, it's cut in so we could get, um, the actual windows, some light and ventilation in there.
Okay, so no balcony on the second floor?
Correct.
Okay.
Do, do you have a site plan in, to show us here?
Yes, so this. Should be, yeah, oh, it's on the front page. It's on A one.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, like a flag lot that you come up and, um. You could kind of see, I didn't have much of a choice where to actually put the garage, because it would just block. Any like habitable space, so to speak, and we didn't want to do that. Um, so it kind of ended up on the north side and, uh, the south side, obviously you're getting better light and things of that nature. So that's basically a result of where that location is. Um, they are doing, uh, a new twenty by forty pool, and there will also be. A, uh, two hundred square foot pool house. Um, in the back there, that's actually, the design actually just matches it, it's, uh, it's a pretty simple, just like gable through it. And that, the actual drawings for that are on A ten.
A little bit too, just so we can see where the pool house is located.
Yep.
On this.
Right there.
So can I ask, how much of the original house are you keeping? Are you, are you adding to this, or are you demolishing?
I'm just adding, yeah, uh, no, we kept, uh, we kept a good amount of it, to be quite honest, I'm just knocking down the wall to the south. On the first and second floor and, and putting an addition onto it. And then I am putting, I am knocking down a wall off the kitchen to create, um, the dining room. So we actually kept quite a bit of it, if not basically all of it, we just knocked a few walls down and I'm, I'm using basically. The existing foundation and, uh, as much of it as I can.
Got it.
Yeah, so you're coming back.
Okay.
So, um. You're gonna go, uh. Well, we're gonna have a public hearing.
Right, and is there, I'm sorry, was there, because of the metal roof, you, you said there was a metal roof or no?
Yes, there is, just, there's, there's just an accent, you know, to, um. You know, cause it's a farm style, so we did, we did, uh, an accent, it's a, it's a matted colored dove gray. Um, standing seam roof, it's basically across the front porch and just like an accent, uh, over the, uh, garage area.
And what does the landscaping look like?
Um, I, I, I actually don't have a landscaping plan.
So that needs.
So that needs to be brought with the, at the public hearing, we need to look at that too.
Okay.
It's, it's the, I just wanna make sure that I'm thinking of the right, correct house, right, it's that, it's that very steep driveway, you have to go way up.
Yeah, it's actually hard to find, I didn't, I was, when I first went there, I was like, where is this place, so it's like, it's just like, almost like a dirt road, you go up to it. And it's way in the back, um, they have one neighbor really, you know, um.
All right, so we'll see you on July eleventh, um, motion to table three nine six Division Street.
Oh, second, all in favor?
Great, thank you.
Oh, here we go.
And just so we're all now, seven fifteen, eleven and nine Morrison Street, all require a public.
Hearing.
Hearing also, so. And that will be July eleventh.
Uh, who's here representing, um, Morrison Street Properties?
I am.
Okay.
And then we have two more on soon, so I'm Jennifer Pantel, my dad's the buyer slash owner. I work with him, and then Lori from McDonald's, who is the architect, and she's also on soon.
Okay.
Yeah, she is.
Is she going to present? Uh, Lori, did you wanna present, or you won't please it?
Me, I can, I can start, um, so we're presenting, um, for you tonight, a, um. Four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two, uh, square foot, um, with a detached garage and a pool pavilion. Um, if we wanna go to the, um, renderings. First.
Do, do you wanna do it there, sometimes it's easier if you can do it on your machine?
Didn't know we were on tonight, so I don't have them ready, so I do apologize for that.
Or number two, you recused yourself last time on this matter.
No one asked me on this time.
It's, it's for the duration, not it's before the board.
This is a different property.
Is it, it's.
The one we, the one we approved last time, it's on the other side of the street.
On twelve, I recuse myself on twelve.
Right.
So this is seven?
I don't feel like I need to recuse myself for these, just because I didn't. Agree with the school purchasing it, it doesn't mean I don't believe houses can be there.
Okay. All right. As long as you, yeah, as long as you can be fair and impartial, that's fine.
And, and how about, what is the difference between twelve and these, I'm just curious.
What's the difference?
No, but I'm saying, what's the difference with her recu- recusing?
Okay, so I mean, if we just, if, I'm not sure where they, um.
Someone had asked me on the last one, and then someone had asked me.
No, I understand that, I understand.
That's, I guess that's the distinction, if there was a request for you to recuse yourself, that I don't know if these are, you know.
Why do they request that? Because it was the same. Okay, okay.
Because you're outspoken.
Oh, this is a new owner at these properties?
Shows your good sense.
Oh, the people bought the Morrison Street, okay.
Okay.
So it was already like a proof, not a proof, but like it's.
So, why don't we meet them?
No, this is a, these are the other lots on Morrison Street.
This is across the street.
At one point or something.
It's like on the corner.
Would you question? Pardon me one second.
Why are we discussing this?
Sure, yeah, we'll, we'll look them up.
Because this is, this is a new owner developer, who wants to build these properties.
Okay, so we're starting from. Meg, I understand what the difference is.
All right, you can present.
Okay, so it's a traditional, uh, shingle style, um, house. Uh, cedar shingle siding, cedar shingle roof with white trims and windows. Um, we have the detached garage, it's acquaintance of the village. Um, and we tried to, uh, keep in mind, um, we didn't want a large pool house. We just wanted a bathroom with covered areas to keep people out of the sun, this lot does sit down in. Um, a bit of a reset. So, um. We have kept all of the houses having a similar type theme. Um, this particular house, the, um, owner of the property will be, uh, presiding in.
Okay, now. This is seven we're discussing right now, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, um, uh, you said the designs are similar, do you, do you want?
We tried to keep a similar theme, um, throughout the houses with the shingle style, the white. Um, natural cedar shingles and the white trim and windows. Um, all casement windows, uh, throughout. Um, we, we tried to be, uh, mindful that they were in their own little subdivision per se. Um. So.
Do you wanna see all four of them at the same place?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, are they the same, I think it would be useful to see.
Yeah, they're, they're not, they're not exactly the same, no.
That's eleven. But they are all very subtle.
So we could keep up, this is seven that we're looking at up there, so if we could keep seven, can we go to the front?
Yeah, we saw the front.
And then. So that's seven, this is eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
No, this is seven. I'm sorry, there you go, that shows that, like, that's the same, see the.
It's the flip, it looks.
Yeah, like they flipped, they flipped the garage on the other side, so that's eleven.
So. Um. I don't know, Megan, you wanna say this, or you want me to say it? So, so Sag Harbor, going back to, to what I was saying earlier. Sag Harbor has had, well, an eclectic sort of environment. And it's very rare, whatever I can remember, two or three houses were in a row or clustered. That really have very much the same architecture and same design. It, we, we, the previous owner came before us about four or five years ago. And, uh, we kind of had the same. Comment, and then it came back with just very different designs and very different styles, et cetera, et cetera, but. So, your similarity does make this seem like a suburban, a high-end suburban subdivision. your similarity does make this seem like a suburban, a high-end suburban subdivision.
Would you prefer, like, one had gray shingle, or at least first by one was white shingles?
Well, yeah, I'm speaking for myself, but we'll let the board answer, but I'm just saying a, a little more diversity, a little more uh, uh, uh. Yeah, would be, with distinction and style.
Different styles with each, and honestly.
And materials too.
It's too massive. If you can, if they, if they can be broke down a little bit or however much, it would be helpful. Uh, we went through this with the owner, original owner, a- across the street when he presented his house uh, that he's building, and he did, they did come back with the smaller version of what they originally showed us. And um, it would just be very helpful, and I would compare in most, and it's not even what you, from history anymore, but the, the uh the area down at the end of Montauk Avenue. It's called New Extension. That, that is similar in that there was these brand-new ha, there's apartments and farms, and so there were all these brand-new houses, but each one is its own, so. And they're not they're not tremendous, but, but they, they are very plentiful and they have plenty of room, you know, in the, in the house. So um, I would, if you haven't if you went for a little ride around that little.
I love that.
Alright, so you got it. So. Alright, very good, very good, so that is my suggestion.
This one is like two thousand underneath, but those ain't a lot covered, like.
I, I understand that, I understand that, I, I understand that. It would still, yes, it would be helpful to your cause, so to speak.
Cause this is almost, you said this one was forty-eight hundred and change, right?
It's. A little.
Forty-eight, thirty, thirty-two.
Thirty-seven or thirty-two, did I read?
Yeah, it's a lot. Four thirty.
My, my first impression on.
Seven thousand six, um, seven thousand seven hundred, so it's the same.
Are they all around the same size?
Some of them are slightly bigger than.
And I understand because of the lot cover, the lot, the size, I, I get it because of the way the code is. Uh, but it would be helpful, I think anyway, it would be more of us to be more accepting.
Okay.
Smaller, a little smaller.
Uh, this is in the historic district, correct?
Yes.
Alright, um, and, and people are going to come up to us and say, how did you allow something that looks like a subdivision from uh, Westchester County? To plop down in the middle of our historic district of our village, this does not look like it belongs in Sag Harbor.
Do their houses surrounding it aren't like? Super, the ones surrounding it are kind of like are single, shingles and all this, they're not like crazy sort of, okay? But.
It's only across the street, is that what you're talking about, the houses that go down Marsden?
Yeah, the cross, the crossing, and the one behind it, I guess, too, but that one you don't really see from the street, I guess, but yeah, the one across.
I, I know what you mean, yeah, yeah. But on, it's on Division Street, yes.
So if I'm hearing you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
But if I'm hearing you correctly, this is, this is four very large, similar-looking houses, sort of one after the other on the same street, is that right?
You would only.
Well, they're four, yeah.
So you would really only see, you rent those, yeah.
Right, but.
You wanna see the site plan?
That, uh. Like you said, though, I mean, I think we've all, I mean, with everybody being agreement with what we've all said so far. Two are, too much a lot.
So, so, just let me go back into the history, cause this is a suggestion.
Yeah.
Um. I, I understand this economy is, when you build them all at one time.
Yeah.
And, and all similar. But I also think the Sag Harbor resident or, or, or the potential purchaser doesn't wanna look like the other guy. So we're not objecting to you building on land that you own, within your rights. The question is, maybe you don't wanna do all of them spec, maybe you wanna let your, your land buyer, um kind of. Are you?
I see what you're saying, that's another way of looking at it.
I'm going a little, like, different from each other.
Well, we, we were only, we were only.
You only care about the road, you know, yeah.
Right.
But yes, I understand.
So that's, that's something to think about, I mean, you know, it's, it we can't, we can't make our decision on that, but.
I get it, I get it. But, and, and I'm glad that you're aware of uh, Montauk Extension. Uh, so I think we're.
Are you guys opposed to the hedges though, there, because it's like by the school and stuff, or?
I think, I mean, on it, personally, I think it's needed.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's like by the school, and like I know people park right in front of the houses, so you just don't know.
A- and it's unique in that it's always been vacant land.
Yeah.
And so, you're not obscuring views that, that previously existed. And particularly, you're not obscuring views of historic properties. So.
Is the property gonna be kept dipping down like that, are you planning to fill it or anything like that?
No, we're staying with the existing grade.
Oh, so they'll be down in a hollow kind of, these houses?
Correct.
Lots of public area to fill up and stuff, but yeah.
Interesting.
Would you ever consider having four completely different looking houses, like how about uh, an early looking house, how about a Greek Revival, how about a Victorian, how about a Queen Anne, let's have a whole lot of different things that have some personality. This has no personality at all.
Just take a look.
So, so, so we're not criticizing the architecture. Okay, we, I mean, we're not, what we're just trying to say is.
I am.
Our charm, we believe, is, is, is in part generated by how quirky it is.
Yeah.
Right, and that's your, one of your words, right?
Yes.
So.
I, I understand.
Okay, so, so it's just the similarity and, and, and this repetitiveness that
Okay.
that we find troubling.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Maybe we can easily change.
Um.
Excuse me, can I speak, I'm, I'm Matt, I'm the owner?
Okay, please do.
I also want you to realize is, what we're doing is we're gonna have a road off of Marsden that goes down the middle, all four of these are gonna face each other. They're not gonna be facing the outside. If you look at the landscape plan. And, um, but I understand that you want four different-looking houses. And that's, that's not a problem, we'll, when we present uh, I guess on the eleventh, we'll, we'll show you four different looking houses.
Great, great.
Good.
Thank you, and, and I'm glad you're being, um open, open to, to our suggestions, thank you.
Is, I want you to realize also is, all of these are under the square footage that is allowed, and all of these are on roughly point eight-five acres. You know, so it's almost an acre on all of these, these are um, its own enclave and they won't be next to another house that, um is significantly smaller, they're all gonna be a in a similar view, and there is no other house that will be viewed from this area.
We, I, I was, we totally understand what you're saying. Um, we're just concerned about the massiveness, and um it, it would just, as I said, it would, it would uh, go, it would a, a little compromise, I guess, is what I'm, was what we're asking.
And, and we appreciate your comments, and, and so, I mean, we're aware, I think that the previous owner was submitting plans for uh, six thousand square foot houses, so. But, but, um.
We'll make them look a little less massive when we.
Okay.
But we do. Actually.
Yeah, I also think the variation. Will help, will help in that, right, cause I think part of the part of the impression that this gives is a very large house, but four of them in a, in a relatively small area. And so even with the road that goes through the middle, I appreciate the, the facing off against each other as opposed to on the street, but I think taken as a collective it it, it just presents as a very large uh, group, particularly when you're talking about it in the historic district, where every other house is around it is going to look unique and, and smaller.
Well, we'll make it look unique.
So, so, just, just to, just to match everybody's expectations. We're not talking about four renditions of this in different colors. Right, okay.
She understands.
I know, but we're talking to the owner now, so we just might as well be direct. But, thank you, uh, any other comments?
He's also aware of the, the, the extension, Montauk Extension, like, that's my.
We're familiar with there.
Okay.
So I would just like to recommend you um, look at the homes, maybe on the other side of the block. Um. And maybe just even go down Main Street and look down all the homes on Captain's Row and um, get an idea of how
varied, right?
How varied the homes out here are. Um, but like regardless of if these houses are facing each other, which I think is kind of a strange configuration.
I do too.
I don't know if I agree with it. Um, I feel like at least two of the houses should be facing towards Marsden Street. Um, because that's just the way houses in Sag Harbor are, they face up to the street. Um, and by making it this four lots that face onto each other you're really creating your own suburbia. Um, and it's, it's, um it's not how Sag Harbor is. Um, we don't wanna see garages, um along the facades, if you're gonna have a garage, maybe turn it to the side so that it's not like, you know, part of the the front of the house, um, cause that's another thing that looks very suburban and not Sag Harbor. Um, and also the, the way that the houses are configured it, at least most of them were, um, very horizontal, and maybe you wanna make it like shorter in the front and longer in the back, you know?
Also to bear in mind that the garage is set further back a little bit than the front elevation. It's backing up, say thirty feet.
Right. On all of them?
Maybe, maybe to your, to your point.
They're all set back.
Yeah. Maybe flip it to the side so that the back of it is against the back of the.
Yeah.
So that driving into the left or to the right, I'm sorry, in this case.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying.
Away from the house, it's all.
Okay.
Alright, so, we're getting table these.
Yeah, anybody else have any quest, uh, ca- questions or comments? So do you have any more questions or comments?
No, I think, uh I understand what you're looking for.
Okay.
Alright.
And, 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 um I guess we could consider your site plan a landscaping plan, but we we, we'd like to know what that is too.
Your landscaping plan.
We do, okay.
Go copy the landscape plan.
We have it.
Okay. But it's, it's gonna, it's gonna change now, hopefully. And we just encourage butterfly gardens and things that, that will support our natural wildlife.
Native plant pollinators.
Right. So, okay, with that, I'm going to move that we table this, can I get a second?
Can we say, uh, we probably need to do all four.
Yeah, I would request that you table all four.
Yep.
I'll move that we table seven Marsden Street, fifteen Marsden Street, eleven Marsden Street, and nine Marsden Street.
I'll second that.
All in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, see you on the eleventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, and now we have the consent agenda items, has everybody had a chance to review the consent agenda items?
I only had one question, and I can't remember which one. Something there was one where they wanted to do something to the windows, and, and we're always very sensitive to windows. Uh, do we know which one?
Seventy-eight Glover. Glover, it's uh, the back shed.
Oh, it's, it's a shed, alright. Uh.
A new shed.
Proposed new windows and door.
And a new.
Alright. Uh, new shed.
They're setting.
Alright, seems okay.
They're putting, they replace those windows and they're replacing um, the garage, who are with, like a French.
Oh. Sounds nice.
So I have one comment, Carrie, when I was here uh, earlier this week I talked to our building inspector, the clockman sign, the rendering of that looked like it was, it's not black.
Nope, it's up right now.
Okay.
And it's wooden.
It's up already. This is, this, this is a common pattern, it's really kind of annoying.
Exactly. But I would like to make a motion for uh, the consent agenda ma- uh items.
For all that's presented?
Eleven Bridge, Brooklyn Bridge Street, thirty-nine Oakland, thirty-seven Beach Avenue. Uh, twenty-two Long Island Avenue and seventy-eight Glover, oh, and also two eleven Hampton.
I'll second.
And one more, don't we have? Oh, no, that's a discussion item. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, so let's just go back to, um.
Oh, yeah. Oh. Second call.
Eleven. Barack.
Okay, I have, I have a couple circled, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have second call.
Sixty-one Madison.
Right.
So we're gonna table, I'll, I'll move to table eleven Goldrick Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
And I'll move to table, uh, sixty-one Madison.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right.
Hey, yeah. Thanks, thanks.
You guys are signing. They're all pretty big.
Thanks, oh. I'll sign it, pass it on, but okay.
Sir, can you introduce yourself?
Brian, I'm a path seal with the Adam Wilk group, current deputy, um, here for eleven Amherst Road, um, we are proposing to demolish these as a house, build a individual house. Say, the model started. This is a constrained lot, and now it's a corner lot, and uh, the water supply, it's kind of the small building on the floor, but dark, essentially, we're thinking about the fix with them. Um, the house is over three thousand square feet, so we'll, we need public hearing, but we just kinda want to get your flavor before, once the whole design. Um, as you can see, it's bottom side of the home, uh, with siding. Um, so the jar with the last piece is on the water side, and on the side, be the north side of the property. Well, that is the south elevation, which is on the, um, adjoining house on Tribble Road, which is the to modify who bodies have home. We do screen roofs in the town city area, and kind of on, on. We're not gonna have much outdoor area, um, by the time we get to Harbor Committee, where I live. I'll be sure the water land areas is a waterfront lot, so we're hoping to maximize, so. Let's see, this is gonna keep flipping right here.
What, what's, what's on there right now?
Yeah.
There is, I don't know, did you see it in, just before? There is a house there, the house is not in very good condition, considering it's a little bit on the, on the, for a few years past, it's the only part that, um, there's always pets, cows, and buildings, and house.
You're gonna demolish it.
There is a house there, but, um similar side, but we're within some of the front. Not necessarily increasing the, the massive scale, it's not in the historic district. But, um.
And how many, I'm sorry, how many square feet?
It's like thirty-one hundred, I believe, it, it will require a public hearing if this iteration does come forward. And there's a question, we may need some miners on the lead, because we're considering a cuckoo on the
harbor side?
Front yard and the water side, it's a small, more like a hot tub, but there is a small churn that we, that's correct, that's accessory structure, um part of the water side would require a bearing, yeah, okay. But otherwise, we, um, we believe we need pyramid and all. Harbor committee, yeah, we're gonna be in Harbor Committee no matter what.
Yeah.
This is where we are. Um, you can see the house is kinda stepped up in a way to stay within the pyramid.
Oh, wow.
Cavers.
Yeah, it's done.
Um, it's, the house is slightly raised, and there's actually drive-down garage part under you, in the basement, to keep the cars off the property. It's not really much driveway space when, when the house is situated under the.
Wait a minute, the cars are gonna be under?
Yeah, have you looked at the water table here?
What, yes.
Yes, we did, yes, we did.
And they're not, cars aren't gonna get washed away?
They're not helped.
Yeah.
Okay.
Understand.
This year.
Yeah. Under the current ground pestle, but yeah, we we did the pestle samples, and and the groundwater table was sufficient. Um, obviously, what I have, except existed, will be planting up above for long shoreline, and um. It will be planting and screening along Amherst Road, and Amherst Road itself is, I wouldn't even call it a road, it's really our driveway, it's. Um, you know, it's, it goes, the road is not an improved road.
It's, it's where they launch their boats. Your neighbors launch their boats, is that Amherst or is that?
There's a tree that's growing through the deck, that is correct, yes.
Oh, my.
Oh, huh, planned, kinda.
Yeah, but, yes, we're proposing to remove that tree, so that's something that'll be discussed in the process, but um.
Do you have other elevations?
How old is this tree, or how big?
It's, I mean, it's, it's a relatively large-sized tree, so it'll be a topic of discussion.
How, when was, when was the other house, when was the other house built, who thinks about what?
I don't know when the other house was built.
Yeah, Meg, do you see the tree in the?
It's very much a different.
Tree's not in the greatest condition, when they bought it, it was like being choked by vines, it's not.
I don't know, it's pretty strong.
Again, it's.
Wow, it looks good.
No question of that.
Yeah, I think, I think the tree remained.
Build the house around it.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
The building.
Build around the tree.
The building inspector will.
Yeah.
Take a look at it.
My mother did exactly the same thing.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
You have a tree in your deck, and you do, okay, kinda cool, really.
Yeah.
Or was the plan, was the intent to be able to cut it down to do this?
Intent is to remove the tree, correct. But yeah, the house, compared to itself, is not extended to the tree where the tree exists, or the deck, where it looks like, put on that wall where the tree is, that. Um, I can see.
But you wouldn't be building over it?
There'll be a deck there.
I mean, there'll be a deck, but we.
You have to comply with that tree preservation.
We're gonna have, yeah, no, we understand, we understand the tree is something that's gonna have to be, it's.
Can your design incorporate the tree? Is it on the ocean, on the water side?
It's on the water side.
It's on the water side, so.
Yeah, people do not wanna keep the tree. They're pretty adamant on that, I think.
Well, they may not have a choice.
Yeah, but I, again, we understand the tree, something that has to be discussed, but I'm here more for just the.
Right.
The design of the house.
So do you have another elevation or anything like that?
Yes, I'm gonna have to take some experience.
Yes.
So this is from the south side, I think I've already looked at this, so this would be it, um, there's a house that would be looking at this. Um, can go to the next.
So is this, sorry, is this from the road, so this is the?
This will not be, so this will be from the next house down on Redwood.
So where the person is standing is the back and the tree is the front, is that the right way of looking at it?
The, the tree is more or less where that person is standing on the left-hand side. The tree.
No, sorry, this tree.
She's talking about the one that's in.
That would be a street tree.
That's the street, so that's the front of the house, it's on the right, and then the, the person is standing on the bike, if it's not there, yeah.
Correct.
And that tree is, that tree is stained.
There is, so this would be from, from Redwood Road.
Right, okay.
You can see there's the garage, I was talking about there.
Yeah.
I see.
And how much of the, of, of that, the front or the front-back, whatever you wanna say it, uh, will be, can be seen from the road?
This, so the garage.
I mean, will it be seen, my friend?
The garage will be down?
It will be seen, yes, I mean, we'll screen it, but we'll, that elevation you saw is a relatively accurate depiction from Redwood Road.
Okay.
This, this is from the water.
Okay. Sorry, can you just, can you go back, I'm not sure I, I'm visualizing the, just go back, Carrie, one please? And one more? So, okay, so if this is the front, this is on Amherst Road, the, the garage goes down, so it's a little bit below grade?
Correct, so this, this line here is grade.
Right.
So this is showing the door, but if you go to the next screen. No, uh, other direction, sorry, Carrie. This is what you will see from the street.
What?
So the garage is that, is that lower part?
Well, the road is, the house is set back from the road, you come in off of Amherst, turn into the garage, there'll be some minimal screening along Redwood Road. And the garage, it's only.
You see the garage.
The garage, you can see it here, this is the, it's, you know, foot or two above grade.
Okay. Uh-huh.
Where the foundation's elevated.
So this view is from the side of a house?
That's the side.
This is from Redwood Road, this is, if you were driving on Redwood Road, this would be.
That's the, that's the side of the garage.
From the public right of way, this would be the road perspective.
The side of the garage?
That is.
The front of the garage, side of the house.
Hold on, let me hear.
This is the, this would be the front of the house on Redwood Road.
Okay, and the garage?
Is down below.
Is submerged here.
Oh, okay, okay.
You're only seeing a small, you don't see the garage, it's, it's hidden.
You're entering from.
Yeah, okay, it looks like.
Entering off of Amherst, correct. And then we'll turn down.
The garage door.
And those are windows sort of at, at eye level, if you like, from the street, is that the right way, looking at the four in the middle?
Um, yes, I, yeah, I think that would be fair.
Okay.
Are, um, what are the stripes across the windows?
They're shingles, or they?
They're beating, there's probably some kind of screening.
Um.
So it's not, so you don't see right through, it's not a glass wall on the road, to give some.
Okay.
I, I'll, we'll provide more details, this is.
Yeah, okay.
Just to get a feeling.
Correct.
The house next door is, is pretty moderate.
Yep, correct.
Too, yeah.
And it's.
When you see the picture that Meg showed us, but it's white, right, all white.
And this looks like wood, hardwood siding, is that right?
Yes, yep, correct.
Uh, the, the roof, it's a green roof.
Yeah, there actually is a roof plan, and um, there, there is, we, the applicant is looking, so there is a small sitting area there, yes.
Do people go up there?
Of course, there you go.
So they can look down on the neighbors from up there?
I mean, yeah, it's, I don't know if you'll mess up people looking down, the neighbor's house is equally as, not larger than ours, but. And this side is a road to the north, and the south there's a house. But I explained um, the attitude towards roof decks, and the applicant's aware of that, and we understand that that is a wishless item and not, it's.
So so when you come back and you give us, whether it's your, your landscaping plan or your site plan, if you could just show the position of your neighbor's houses relative to um.
We can do that.
Right here, you can see.
Yep.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
The house is here, the, the roof area would be more or less in here.
And the modern house that was showing in the picture is that one?
This one here, yep.
That one right there.
Then this is Amherst Road. It's, it's, it's more or less a driveway. Um, this house is pretty screened in, and it's oriented in the other direction, so I don't know that there'll be a missile impact, but.
I think the design is fine for Redwood, I think that's where that community is going.
Yeah, there's certainly quite a few of those houses scattered in the neighborhood, so it would be changing the.
Right.
It would be the first line or anything in there, I would agree with that.
Right, it's a very interesting design.
And it's, it's a constrained lot, and we're trying to do it a way to either get the minimal bearings needed, if any at all. So I think they've done a good job in trying to accomplish that.